Okay, I guess we can start. Is that clock pretty much right?
Town is seven o'clock.
Okay. This will be the regular meeting of the Town of Hennessy Board of Trustees. I, before we do anything else, want to welcome Harold Shaw, who will be a new board member in May. This morning in May. And I didn't ask him, but I imagine he's here to kind of get the feel of things, see what's going on. So anyway, it's good to have you. Roll call, please.
Keith.
Here.
Cliff.
Here.
Bert.
Here.
Richard.
Here.
Wes.
Hennessy United Board, does anybody got anything?
Just welcome back.
Well, thank you.
Yay, we're glad to be here.
Thank you very much.
Not that you didn't do a good job.
I understand.
I only did an okay job. I didn't do a great job like Bert though.
Whatever. All right. Consider approval of consent agenda minutes of the January meetings. Approval of claims as follows. January purchase order 3,002,017. February purchase orders 12,75222. February restricted sales tax fund 70,070.27. February library fund 57287. February street and alley fund 2761. And transfer 24,50167 from CDBG checking, I guess, is that correct? 104900, the pool checking 143686.
I make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
And in that, I'm sorry, accept the following reports.
Oh, I apologize.
No, I missed it. Treasure, library, police, and the quarterly.
There is no quarterly.
There is no quarterly. I was just, I didn't see a quarterly. Okay.
I make a motion to approve this consent agenda.
Second, roll call.
Yes?
Bert?
Yes.
I didn't hear this.
Keith?
Yes.
Eric and I were gone, I couldn't hear her.
Eric and you.
Either.
I hope it's the heat. All right. Item four, citizens' comments. Anybody here to make a comment that's not on the agenda? Okay, you guys are quiet. Other scheduled businesses. Item A. Discussion and action to prepayment of young contracting pay application two for 50,684.92 using CDBG funds for CDBG 17767-19. This is on drainage work.
All right. I move that we approve the payment of young contracting and pay the app two for 50,684.92 using the CDBG funds for CDBG number 17767-19. I'll second that.
Roll call.
Yes.
Cliff?
Yes.
Bert?
Yes.
Richard?
Yes.
Okay, item B is discussion with possible action to approve the purchase of a sand salt spreader. I saw this on the agenda yesterday and I looked at these and saw the bids and I thought, "Polly's the way to go because it's never gonna rust or corrode." But then Tiffany told me today that-
It'll weather correct?
That the expected lifespan, what, seven or eight years? And the stainless steel ones are twenty?
Thirty years.
Thirty? So, big difference.
Yeah, that poly stuff will get sun, sun.
Yeah.
That's it.
Have you all had a chance to look at these much?
I did not.
I also called and talked to Tiffany and asked if we had a blade, which I didn't think we did, to go on the front of something to push snow. And we don't. They're gonna use the skid steer and what'd you tell them?
The tractor with the bucket.
Tractor and bucket. And I hope they've got those ready to go and-
Yes, they do. They have all of it.
Fueled up.
We had a meeting this afternoon to make sure that they have their department already prepared.
Good, good job.
The only comment I'll make is the little larger one only costs about $400 more.
Yeah. I saw that, reached you guys.
So I would go for the biggest one.
I would too. I would too. And this is something that even though the hopper's stainless steel, I'm sure it's got steel cards somewhere. If we use salt, make sure that they get it cleaned really good every time.
Most of the time what they do is they get the sand and then they mix the salt in with the sand.
Right.
That's what they've been doing lately, even with their shovels and everything. They have been mixing a little bit of salt in with the sand.
Bert, if they want to, they can actually switch. We use it on boats down in the south. It's called Salt Away. And you just put it on a hose and just spray it on there. It'll actually neutralize the salt. So we use it like, so we've used it in boats down in Florida for years. When you pull them out and it'll stop all the rusting and corrosion off.
Okay. Yeah, we'll have to check into that. Personally, I think we need one. The county did a great job for us salting our, I think they salted around the school.
Yes.
And some of the intersections and, well, I really appreciate them doing that. I think we kind of need to, we had a funeral the other day and you couldn't get up the hill at Cemetery Road and the county went out and salted and sanded that. And I think it'd be good to have the equipment to take care of our own stuff.
And it'll take, once we order, it'll take about three weeks to get in.
So we'll get it here after the cold weather's done.
But you never know with this one, or we may end up with another one.
Right.
If we wait till the summer to buy these, are they cheaper?
I don't know. Sure enough, we wait till the summer and we need it about three or four more times.
Yeah. It says price is good for 30 days.
Go up the next time you look at them?
Three, four, seven? I was hoping to be able to go pick one up right away.
You're right.
Yeah, I'm gonna make a motion to purchase the 118-inch hopper electric spreader for 63.46 from perfection.
One second.
Roll call.
Cliff?
Yes.
Keith?
Yes.
Bert?
Yes.
Richard?
Yes.
Okay, item C is discussion with Tony Blackburn on possible spring car show. Tony, what you got in mind?
Well, I know a lot of the businesses are hurting right now, especially restaurants and the mercantiles. So what I'm trying to do is try to bring some people in. I'm usually, I'm with a group of people called Cruisin' Oklahoma. It started by Jared Holt. And what we do is we usually pick a place in Oklahoma once a month to go around and visit. And we go take pictures and whatnot. Started about five months ago, started out with 50 cars. Our last month in January, we had over 250 cars come out to Gas and automotive. So what I've been trying to do is I'm thinking of trying to get basically kind of a good-sized event for Hennessy to try to spur some business, bring some awareness to some of the mercantiles that are just opened up. The restaurants, I know a lot of the restaurants, including my own, it's been a hard time last year. It's not, it's not easy for a lot of them right now. So if we can bring in people as much as we can, that's kind of what I'm going for. Kind of a couple of things that we've got on there, I'm gonna pass these out. Basically, these are just kind of the maps of areas that I think that would behoove us if we did block off. And I'll give you the reasons why here in one second. But if you look at the map there, you're gonna see right there at Dwayne's place, we're looking at doing a dyno. Basically, he's gonna do for 50 bucks, three pools down there. That'll bring him some money. That also brings, you know, some of the high-powered horse, high-powered horsepower cars out here. You know, because they see a dyno, they're one, I'm gonna have fun on it. So the reason I'm saying block off right there in front of Dwayne's spot, because there's gonna be probably a crowd there. I don't want to stare and force block off any emergency vehicles or anything along that nature. So we just block off right there at the police station so that they can get in and out. No problems and no issues. Of course, the area where Friends Bar is and that little road back there, there is a burnout pad back there that we've used several times. Like to be able to use that. I've talked with Dustin, he was supposed to get with the fire department. I'm glad you're back, chief. So now you can actually kind of see what's going on. We'd like to see if we can get a fire department out there to assist us in that and wetting the ground. And in case if any emergency happens, you know, a car unfortunately goes up in flames, we have someone there that can respond to it immediately. Of course, the park, I'm looking at trying to set up the big tent. Hennessy United, I've got with Stacy Klein, they said they're gonna bring out the stage. Like to see if we can get music going out there, if not, a small band. Like I said, I'd like to make this a really good-sized event to give a little normalcy to what we haven't had in a long time. The pink area that you see marked up there is the parking lot across from Sparky's. I wanted to talk to the owner of that and see if we could use that parking lot for possibly a slow speed area for motorcycles. A lot of these motorcycles like to do little wheelies about two to three miles per hour and little stoppies and whatnot. You know, they like to show off what they can do. But making sure that, you know, it's a small area and it's only a slow speed area. But that's like, that's the reason I put it in pink is, of course, I wanted to run that past you guys. You know, that gets kind of one of those areas that, you know, the town may say, "Ah, no," or "Yeah, that sounds like a good idea," as long as we have a sign out that it says, you know, "They assume all responsibility and risks." Couple of other things that I've got, of course, the tent in the park. I wanted to make sure that was be okay with the town to do, considering it's town property. The captain said that they are on board to help if everything is approved. I do know that you guys have a possible, I got with Jack about radio remotes that you guys have every year or pay for every year. I was wanting to see if we could possibly get one of those out here during that time to, of course, get awareness to bring more people in.
That's Hennessy United.
That's Hennessy United that has that? Okay, I'll get with Stacy Klein on that. So one of the other things that kind of was kind of neat, they reached out to me on this, is a DV competition. Anybody back in the 90s remember the big base systems, you know, these cars used to have? Connie Camburn with the USAC contacted me wanting to do an event. And her events minimum bring about 40 to 50 cars. They would bring all their own equipment and hold an actual sanctioned event here. I've already talked to CHS to see if we could use their parking lot for that and they said that was perfectly fine. So I did get with the chief of police about what's going on. He says that, you know, as long as the vehicles that are on Highway 81 are all street legal, he's perfectly fine with things, of course, giving him heads up so that way he's not sidelined with two, three, 400 cars. I wouldn't want to do that to him. And I, he said that he'd possibly get with the sheriff's department of helping out as well. It's kind of, it kind of turned into a little cruising and kind of snowballed to a lot larger thing what people started wanting to see. And people started contacting me and wanting to get larger and larger. And that's when I started thinking, hey, we need to get with the town to make sure, you know, this is something that they would be okay with and, you know, ultimately, you know, give their blessing on. So I don't want to sit there and blindside anybody by this amount of vehicle or traffic in town. So, but I'm mainly doing it because, you know, our, our businesses here need some help.
Absolutely.
That's true.
Anything to get people here.
You've got pink here on 81 Highway. You weren't thinking of closing that?
No, 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 not the highway.
We can't close the highway.
The pink area right there is that parking lot across from Sparky's.
I think he just bad at coloring and setting lines.
Yeah.
Yeah, you know. It was kind of a quick thing, you know, I had to run hay to gas for you, so.
That part would be strictly between you and the owner of that property.
Okay. Talk to you on that, Luke.
Luke?
But-
Well, like I said, that's something I did want to get with you guys on, just to make sure you guys were okay with. Most of these bikes don't even hit two to three miles an hour when they're doing these things. So.
Now, I want to back you up for a second. What'd you say about the DV contest?
A decibel competition. It's these cars with base systems. Reason we wanted to do it over by the CHS area is because that way it kind of gets them away from the residential room and then they have the highway.
What time of day and for how long?
We're looking at approximately one to about six. That's about it.
For that portion?
Just that portion.
Okay.
That's it. I don't want to really go past much past six because, of course, it is a Sunday. We're looking to do this on April 18.
Oh, it's a Sunday?
Correct. Most car people that are in the car businesses, that's about the only day they have off. So a lot of us guys usually like to make a nice cruise on Sunday. So-
Are you gonna be able to get the restaurants to stay open on Sunday?
I have talked with several of the restaurants already and including some of the mercantiles. And they have all said that they would love to stay open just, just to try to get, generate some revenue. I'm even trying, I've even gotten with a couple of speed shops and whatnot. They're wanting to come up and set little tents and booths up in the park and really make this a nice event. So that's kind of one of those things, like I said, just trying to bring people to town, give them something to do.
What was the date again, April what?
April 18.
And that's a tentative date, of course. Is that gonna give you enough time?
Oh, yeah, that'll give us plenty of time. Most of this stuff is, it's pretty quickly set up. So, and to be able to get it out there, I've already talked with Jared over at Cruisin' Oklahoma and he's all for it. You know, as soon as we get the okay, I'm gonna get with Jack over All About Hennessy and we're gonna start, you know, figuring out how to do some media for it and getting it blasted out there. I really think that as soon as we get it out there, it'll, it'll get out there pretty fast. These car shows are, people are biting at the bit to go to them right now because, like I said, they're, they're wanting something normal again. It's just why, why these, this cruise is getting so big now. This, actually, this month, we're supposed to be going to Halibut next weekend. If, whether permitting, of course. But so far, we've got over 300 cars signed up for that one. And that's just, just this one group.
Ed, do you have any input?
Tony gave a talk to me about it. And like I also talked about it. And like I told him, I said, as long as, you know, the burnout pad, you gotta just keep an area cordoned off there, you know, where nobody gets in the way, nobody interferes with that. And having a fire department unit standing by there to wet it down. And if a car catches fire, and basically my other thing was that we just need to make sure that every car that comes is street legal to be on the streets here and insured and everything else. We can't have cars, you know, because in events past, we've said cars have to be street legal and they, we get two or three that are not. So that's, you know, so that's my thing. But I'm all about bringing this in for the business. I think it's great for business. And I know it's been a hard year. It really has. And maybe it's time for, you know, somebody to bring something like that in so we can actually get business going. I just need enough time where I can, you know, if we're expecting 250 cars or something like that, I need to get just about every officer I can get out there also in case, you know, in case we have any problems.
Is this gonna, is this gonna be more of a cruise or a show?
Well, they're all coming cruising here and just basically kind of showing. The town itself will just be basically kind of show, that's it. We call it a cruise because all these people coming in from Oklahoma City, we have guys that are coming in from Dallas and everything. It's just basically a cruise into Hennessy. So, and in all honesty, if this goes well, we'd almost want to try to make it an annual thing. So I think it'd really be good for the town just to even get the town's name out there. So, plus we've got some pretty cool spots to take pictures, like in front of Richard's place over there and, you know.
Too close.
I've shown that picture already online and they love it, like in front of the gas pumps.
Well, the last car show, I towed all the participants there with cars that if they wanted to, they could take pictures if they pulled their vehicle out in front of the pumps at the Champlin Station and this and plant station. Did you say you had motorcycle component to this car show?
Yes, we're actually gonna be putting it out there to cars, trucks, motorcycle cruisers and sport bikes. We're gonna be putting out to several different clubs out there. So in all honesty, we could have a whole bag of different types of vehicles showing up to this. And, you know, it's just, it's more of a, and you're part of the car community and you've been a part of the car community as well. And you both know very well that when we all get together, it's just, we just want to see what everybody has. And you could, you could have something really interesting show up and that's just kind of how things go.
If you're gonna do this annually, there's a, my hearing is not good, so I might be repeating something you've already said.
There, you're fine.
But there's a biker magazine. And it goes, it's an Oklahoma publication out of San Springs. They have 80,000 subscriptions on it. I advertise in there.
Okay.
But it's quarterly, so I don't think, you may not have time to get in and buy it.
Yeah, I don't know if we made a cut on that one.
Yeah, I don't think we can make it, but maybe in the future.
Yeah. And like I said, if this could turn into an annual thing, it'd be great for the town. It would just, you know, it'll be something that people start looking forward to. It's just like the Wine and Chocolate Festival. You know, people missed that this last year.
The rest is not here, but I know the ranch room, they get car clubs and motorcycle clubs that just want to do a day's drive and then come to the ranch room.
Exactly. So that's just something I want to try out and see what happens and see if it's something that's good for Hennessy.
Are there gonna be COVID restrictions that are, that, is that, how's that gonna affect? I'm all for this, I'm just asking.
I think it's outside, so I don't think.
I mean, it's outside. I mean, in all honesty, I think it's gonna be up to the person and how, I mean, and how they want to, you know, protect themselves. I guess with the vaccination now really starting to hit out, I mean, that could be a good thing.
Hopefully by April, a lot of people will be vaccinated.
Well, yeah, I know the president said about several different times that they're, they've got over 100 billion, you know, vaccinations coming towards us. So hopefully by then, we're, we're on the downward slope of all this, it would be nice.
The hospitalizations have gone way, way down since, yeah.
They're getting more vaccine here. I'm watching that registration slot, Tiffany.
I go tomorrow for my second one.
A lady at my company sent out an email about there's some independent places have developed an app to where they'll send you messages when there's openings in your area.
I've got that. And it seems like, it seems like when it started, they got a shipment a week. It seems like now every day they get, based on that app, they get 10 shots. Or I think today Enid had 24 shots, you know, it came very, maybe because of the ice. People didn't show up, I don't know. But I think it's moving along much quicker.
Barb, did you have a question?
So will Cruis' Oklahoma be in charge of telling, like Cliff, you're gonna park such and such place? And will he be charged for an entry fee?
No, we're gonna try to keep this as free as possible. And the reason for it is, is we want to try to attract as many people as we possibly can. When you start getting to the point where, you know, they have to think of entry fees and things like that, we're not doing this as like a car show per se with, you know, prizes and everything else. This is just to come out and show off what you have. It's, it's to come out and be able to talk and have fellowship between, you know, other, you know, auto enthusiasts. So now the only thing that's probably gonna cost things is, of course, you know, Dwayne's gonna charge 50 bucks for three pools on the dyno. Now, of course, that, that helps his business out. And that's what, that's what ultimately this is about, is trying to help the businesses.
Is there certain year model cars that are included or is it just whatever you've got, bring it?
If it has wheels and it's street legal, bring it. Street legal, of course. So that's, that's kind of all there is to it. So like I said, I just wanted to kind of give your guys this blessing on this before we really moved forward heavily on it.
I think it's a great idea.
Tony, if you want to use that angle building on the Champlin, that angle building on the Champlin, if you've wanted to use that, you're welcome to use it.
Okay, thank you.
I got my phone number earlier.
I make a motion to allow Tony Blackburn to have a spring car show on April the 18th.
There's no action on that line item, I didn't know.
Oh, excuse me.
I think you can just-
I think we can just do it.
I apologize.
Well, it's kind of informational and I appreciate you doing that.
Thank you.
Never mind.
Thank you.
Okay, item D is discussion with possible action to allow the fire department to use the old daycare building for training. James Metusick's here, he's our assistant fire chief and has been filling in, doing a somewhat decent job in my absence. So I'll let him, I'll let him explain what.
We've been looking for someplace to train search and rescue. We've used the old storm, or the new storm shelter and we kind of bruised it up several years ago with our RPACs, so we don't want to do that again. And we found out this building's coming to open. So we're gonna ask the town permission if we can do search and rescue and other training in that building. Or if you guys have other plans for it, then we'll keep searching for something else. But we don't want to go in there and bruise it up if you get plans for it.
I think, I don't-
Sounds good to me.
Yeah, I think it sounds like a great idea.
One, one thing, I know Tiffany talked to Ed about making a kind of a combination police-fire and where they could do, we would not be using real smoke because if we did, we'd probably let it burn down by accident and that wouldn't look too good. But-
We save the footing.
It'd be chemical smoke like they use for theatrical productions.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure of that because, yeah, we look like a bunch of little kids coming out of a, you know.
Cold shoot, yeah.
We went in there after you guys blow smoked in there.
How many petitions are in, well, I was gonna go look at it. There's only one small room in there. It's all open. You have the kitchen area, then there's one small room where they used to keep the infant babies. But then everything else is-
And then the two bathrooms.
Yeah, and then there's two bathrooms.
Would we be able to go in and put a couple, well, not to be full petitions, but just up where when the guys are crawling, they'll hit a wall and have to come around it?
I'm guessing she took the shelving out of there, didn't she?
Yeah.
Okay.
I went in there the other day.
You, I'm sorry?
I went in there the other day to look and see if, well, she took out everything and she's got it.
What shape is it in?
Pretty creepy, if you ask me.
I went to kindergarten, I went to kindergarten in that building.
Pretty creepy, if you ask me. Every time you step, it's like creepy.
I was, I was the last kindergarten class to be in there.
Is the floor solid or is it just creaky?
It's creaky.
But it's solid?
Yeah, it's pretty solid.
Okay.
So would we be allowed to put a few petitions, like a maze where they have to go in and find their way back out?
I wouldn't say why not.
But you have to be pretty committed that you're not gonna use that building again if you turn it over.
Well, we talked about maybe doing like rooms or something so that they, you know, maybe if you could do like, maybe not-
It won't be like a-
We're not gonna remodel it for you. And if we do it, it'll be petitioned. We don't have to go all the way to the ceiling unless Ed needs it all the way to the ceiling.
For us, it would be easier all the way to the ceiling because if we do building, room searches and stuff, a kind of four-foot wall, you can actually send to a real-
That has, that has tall ceilings. I mean, those ceilings are, you know, those ceilings are tall in there.
How about an eight- How about an eight-foot wall that won't go to the ceiling?
It, yeah, it could be seven, eight feet tall, it doesn't have to go to the ceiling, just as long as we can't see into the room, you know, to see if there's.
Right, 'cause those ceilings are at least tens.
Yeah, they're way up there.
Well, we'd have to go all the way up to support the wall, but we wouldn't have to sheet rock it or put plywood on it all the way up either. If we just want two sheets or one sheet, turn it up, it'd be eight foot.
Yeah.
I mean, we still gotta go up and support that wall or it'll fall over.
Well, can you support them across the top to each other and, and make them home? You still gotta go up.
Whose budget is this coming out of? County Fire Department budget?
Hey, I, I'll check on it, let me see.
Well, I think.
I like my idea.
And James, you said maze, but I think, aren't you kinda thinking like a house layout?
Sure.
Like a bedroom, living room?
You know that we'd be going down a hall, we'd be going in this room. We'd have to have a couple rooms.
And I would think that'd work for them.
To go in and out of.
That's exactly, yeah.
We'll get with the police department, see what works for them, what works for us, and.
That's what I was gonna say, can you get with me and we'll, we'll try to set something up and maybe build something in there.
Yeah.
Um, that actually suits the purpose where we can go in and do now, do you care if it gets bruised up? Nobody cares?
As far as I'm concerned, I don't.
Semunition guns, where we, they're shooting paintballs. So, I don't know if that would be a problem, shooting paintballs in there.
Sounds like fun to me, let me know.
You answer him, not me.
No, we'd kinda like to have that option too.
So, I, but yeah, I could do some really good training in there if you don't mind me shooting up the walls with paintballs.
I, I think we'd have a building that would be something that's not, that doesn't get used, that could rot and fall down eventually. Or we can use it to help keep our, you know, firefighters and policemen safe by doing additional training than from what they would normally get to do. I agree.
I think it's a good plan, and, uh, I like the fact that both entities could use it, because it's a town building and why not, yeah.
Does that mean we're gonna use it every month? No, we don't do search and rescue every month, we got a set of trains that we go through the year, so we'd be using it a couple times a year.
That's the same with us, probably two or three times a year, we'd use it.
Main thing I want to make sure is that it doesn't sit down there and get vandalized with windows knocked out and we'll have to keep an eye on it, you know.
I can always put it on the hot shoe, probably, I'll subscribe by it.
Yeah.
So, I wouldn't suppose like if Oklahoma's needed a place to train and they come down and.
As long, yeah, we got priority, if I were to.
Yeah, no, absolutely, but I mean.
Yeah, they can coordinate with us.
So, there's a lot of, there's a lot of days left, you know, a couple of times a year, a couple of times a year, there's a lot of dates left to where it could, could be used.
And we probably do cross-training with Dover too.
Yeah, absolutely.
In Oklahoma.
Sorry?
In Oklahoma.
Sure, if that's what you're saying.
I mean, any, any surrounding the car.
Bert, since you've mentioned kids breaking their windows, maybe we should put a sign on it that it's Fire Department, Police Department Training Center or something.
That may not be a bad idea.
And maybe leave a light, one light on, you know, they got these new light bulbs.
That may not be a bad idea.
Very low electricity.
I don't need to turn on the electricity there.
Is it gas heated?
Yes.
So, you got the utility shut off?
All the utilities are off.
Yeah, we don't need utilities, I don't think. You may.
We do not need utilities.
You don't need power?
I think we need power in there.
Unless, unless we wanted to actually cross it to a actual training center to where we actually can hold classes in there too, if we wanted a slightly bigger room, I don't know. You know, then we would need power, but other than that, if it's just gonna be used for training purposes only, just, you know, like building clearing, then no, I wouldn't need power.
I think we need power.
We search in the dark.
I understand that, but we do that at night meetings and there's times we wanna turn the lights on.
When we're done.
When we're done, to clean up, pick up.
But far as water and heated, we don't, we don't need any of that. But Chris, it wouldn't be that expensive to leave it on for them to recharge. And the windows, if they're a problem, we could probably somehow.
Secure them.
Secure them.
I think you might wanna secure them anyway, just looking at them.
Other than glass.
Collected glass?
Because they are. I'm betcha she was paying pretty hefty utility bills because of those windows.
So, we're just asking you to consider it, and if it's a go, then we'll.
Do it, do the motion on this.
Yeah, it's like closer.
No, I don't, 'cause I already messed up the last time, you gotta keep. 'Cause it just said discussion, it didn't. Okay, let's say actually, excuse me. I don't wanna get too in a row, but I did.
I believe that, um, that we allow the fire department to use the old daycare building for training purposes.
Do you wanna close the, the police department also?
I don't know that I can add that on there since it's not on the agenda.
That's true, you can.
Well, if it's for a train, just make it a training center and then make it.
Yeah. We won't leave now.
We use the old daycare as a training center.
Second, roll call?
Keith?
Yes.
Bert?
Yes.
Cliff?
Yes.
Richard?
Yes.
All right, item E is discussion with possible action to accept the twenty nineteen, twenty twenty audit. I have looked at that briefly. I didn't see where we got deemed on anything, did we?
Um, yeah, there is one.
Was there a deem?
I think, back here at the back.
Back.
Um, and it's, I had to call our accountant to figure out what it was. Um, what it is, is bank persons' statements on our loan account sent statements. And they sent us a revised statement this past year from the year before. And it was a change of sixty-four thousand, and so the auditor said that we need to do better at finding those problems every month. And I asked our, our accountant, um, well, how do, and she said just, she in fact wrote up the management response, because I didn't even know what it was for.
Okay. Okay.
And they had to make an accounting adjustment entry for it.
I see something on here, word says senior management, is that indicating that you're older?
Senior account, what?
Senior management.
Where? Where's that?
On the recommendation, it says the city's government body and senior management.
Okay, we have a motion to.
I wanna make a comment. Tiffany, I wanna make a comment.
Uh-huh.
I didn't get the, uh, the sales tax and user tax in this report, I didn't see them.
Uh, this is not our quarterly report.
Oh, it's not the quarterly.
This is just.
No, 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 this is our annual audit.
Okay.
So, this is a different format and different everything. This is actually looking at, to me, this thing is hard to read.
It is.
It's very hard to read, you'd have to come home and study it.
I think I'll probably ask the VBC to go through this, 'cause I, I'll be honest, I just don't understand it.
Well, then I might set you up an appointment with Tammy. You'll have to go to admin.
I won't do that.
Okay, I'll set you up an appointment with Tammy, our accountant.
I'm used to a balance sheet showing how much cash we started with and how much we ended up.
And she does that quarterly for us.
We'll have that in the quarterly report.
Yes, the quarterly statement I give you, she does that for us.
Okay.
But this is the actual annual financial report audit, and they don't have that in here.
Richard, this, we're required to do this annually, uh, just to make sure we're complying with law on where funds are deposited, how they're deposited, who's able to withdraw, correct?
Yes.
And to make sure that we're legal, so to speak.
I understand that, Bert, and I'm sure there's Oklahoma law.
Right.
Required, but, you know, it talks about net position, and I don't know what you're talking about, cash flow or, for example, on page eleven at the top, it says the town's governmental activities have a decrease in the net position of four hundred and fifty-four thousand, two hundred and seventy-seven dollars. I don't know what that means. I have no idea. It's a pretty big figure, it caught my eye.
I think it's talking about a tax, it goes on to say tax revenue decreased, decreased twenty-two point seven percent in the current year, I think it's just showing that, and Tiffany, Tiffany probably needs to be talking about it, not me, because she understands it better than I do, I'm sure, but.
This report, I cannot, this, I, I've never been able to understand this right here.
I can't persuade him.
I can take you through the quarterly report and explain that one to you, but this one right here, I've never been able to understand this right here.
You took me through the quarterly report, we spent quite a bit of time on it, and I appreciated that, and I understand the quarterly reports. But, you know, I don't wanna take up too much time.
That's just like the auditor, when he sent me this and he said, please explain why this happened. And I'm like, I don't even know, I, I can't even find this number in my books. And so I had to send it to our accountant, and our accountant says, oh yeah, that's what we did. A lot of, some of this stuff that they do, we don't even have record of it here in our office of us doing. So, they do all of this stuff.
And that's why you have.
They get paid the big bucks.
Right, that's why you have an accountant, so the accountant will take care of it. And also double-check things.
Well, I don't know what that.
Richard, I guarantee you, it means that our sales tax was down in our net. You know, our sales tax was down last year.
That's why we made the adjustments.
We made a lot of changes.
We made a lot of changes.
And that is, and that is what it's saying.
I think that last quarterly report, we were three, three hundred thousand cash flow had lost, and we eliminated the public works, we never, uh, a library director, we weren't in position.
Yes.
Cut back on contracts, but then I see this figure of four hundred and fifty-four thousand. And I think it's terminology, I don't know what this thing, net, they say net position, I don't know, cash flow, ground sheet, income statement, but.
But they take into consideration liabilities, they take into consideration all kinds of stuff, so that net position could be all of that.
I agree that Tiffany probably, if you're interested in in deciphering this report to that extent, then she probably gave you set up with a meeting with Tammy.
Yeah, I, you know, I go down Oklahoma City, I go down to the antique stores now and then, and I just go through it and stop in and.
I'll set you up with Tammy, 'cause Tammy, Tammy has worked for the town, well, since before I came, I don't, twenty-some.
Oh, twenty-five years?
Twenty-five, thirty years, she's been the accountant for the town.
I would say March, March first or after.
Okay.
I'll have my second shot in.
Okay, I will set you up an appointment.
I make a motion to approve the twenty nineteen, twenty twenty audit.
Second that, roll call?
Cliff?
Yes.
Bert?
Yes.
Keith?
Yes.
Richard?
Yes.
All right, item F is discussion with possible action to purchase a new drive-through window unit. That will be for this building, um, I'm aging myself by telling you this, but I told Tiffany, I vaguely, vaguely, as a small child, remember this building, this addition was added later, but from this wall forward, being built, and I said it had to be sixty years old. And she can kind of explain what they're up against and it's not funny, Barb.
I don't re, Bert, I don't remember that drive-in being here when I came in seventy-two.
So, maybe it was added.
I remember when, I do remember when the drive-in, the, the walk-up.
They said it was built in the nineteen sixties.
I know, that's what they said, but I don't remember it being there when I started in seventy-two.
'Cause I saw all the information.
But they changed, they changed, you know, a lot of, not changed. But I know, I know that the walk-up was added after I was here. That drive-in might, I just remember that there were few times that the, the heat thing, that's why I don't remember it being there when I started. You said what? When I started in seventy-two, I don't remember.
Well, it leaks a lot of cold air. The sound portion is, uh, gray. What else? Go ahead.
Like, if you're sitting at that first desk there, you can feel the draft.
Yeah.
You can feel the draft coming, um, from the window. Um, and, um, the, the top of the, um, the top of the counter is, is coming undone, it's coming, it's.
It's like peeling up.
Yeah, peeling up.
Does the heater still work in there?
No, the heater in it doesn't work. The drawers are, are getting to where they don't hardly open and close in it where we have the money drawer, um.
It's just old, it's worn, it's worn out.
It is.
So, the total price delivered and installed is seventy-four thirty-five?
Yes.
And it looks something like one of these pictures on the screen.
The, the first one on the back is what it would look like after. This last one on your right side is what it, that's one that is like a bay window.
Right.
So, that was like a before picture, and the one on the left would be an after picture.
So, it'll be a flat with the wall?
Mm-hmm.
Well, I know you've had it worked on, haven't you?
Huh?
Haven't you had it worked on for three times?
Yeah, we've had, we've, we've had these people come out and work on it three times. And it's heated by a light bulb in there.
Really?
Yes. And so the light bulbs burn out, but I can figure out how to open it to get to the light bulb. And so, I was down there trying to unscrew a bunch of screws.
Pretty soon it'll fall out in part.
One thing on the bit, it says it does not include removal and disposing of the existing bay window. Are we gonna have somebody else take it out and then, then put the new one in? Because it's gonna be more than the seventy-four thirty-five.
I think they will though. I think they'll take it out. Did they say?
Where'd you see the?
Oh, it didn't.
The second pair.
Electrical outlet too. Says it's not gonna pay for it.
But we, we need to have, I guess we could set this at, I don't know, uh, don't spend more than.
Well, we have a one hundred and eleven right there.
But they're not gonna, they're not gonna reframe it to, like, if the new one matched the same size, it's that they're not gonna, the reframe means it's not included and quite a bit that's not included.
Yeah.
The wall finishes inside and out.
But they're not gonna know how much is gonna be taken care of until you get into it also. It could be one of those things, you don't know what you're gonna get into. They're just saving their honey.
But we need to make sure the new one is not a lot smaller before we've got a gap in the bricks that doesn't.
Let me talk to them some more.
Okay.
You want us to table it, or approve it up to a certain amount?
Well, if you go for this, and let me, this amount, and then.
You can call them tomorrow and say, my mean town board. You can call them tomorrow and say, my mean town board approved this for this amount, but you have to take that old one out and dispose of it.
Well, cause if anything, we can get it ordered, and if I have to do anything else, then I can come back to you guys.
You guys okay with that?
Yeah.
I'm okay with that. You got that?
No, no, I can.
Okay.
You got it?
It don't, it's fine, yeah, I got it. I make a motion to, uh, install a new drive-through window unit for the seventy-four thirty-five, but I don't know how to put the finding out how much it will cost to take out and finish.
I don't know, I think it would just, just approve it, then we just may, we just may have to revisit at a later date.
Okay, I approve the seventy-four thirty-five for the new drive-through window.
Second, roll call.
Cliff?
Yes.
Bert?
Yes.
Keith?
Yes.
Richard?
Yes.
Okay, item G's executive session, present twenty-five Oklahoma statute, section three oh seven B one, to discuss promotion of Aaron Pitts, police officer and executive session. Do we have a motion to convene into executive session?
I move we convene into executive session.
Second, roll call.
Keith?
Yes.
Bert?
Yes.
Cliff?
Yes.
Richard?
Yes.
All right, vote to reconvene into regular session, you writing that key?
No, I have.
I make a motion to adjourn, convene.
Second, roll call.
Cliff?
Yes.
Bert?
Yes.
Richard?
Yes.
Keith?
Yes.
Item H, discussion with possible action to promote Aaron Pitts.
Right, I move that we promote Aaron Pitts to sergeant and increase his pay to eighteen dollars an hour.
I will second that.
Roll call.
Keith?
Yes.
Cliff?
Yes.
Bert?
Yes.
Richard?
Yes.
Item I, accept or reject any resignations not received prior to posting the agenda. Uh, new business? Anybody got anything? Citizens comments?
I do have some conversion.
Oh, I mean, hot little thing.
What'd I tell you, February sixteenth?
Yes.
Murderers having a, a webinar at the fire station over storm spotting, of any of the town employees or any of you guys willing to come over to public.
What time did you say that was again?
Seven, I believe, seven to nine. I'll send you a message beforehand.
On what day?
February sixteenth.
February sixteenth?
You gonna have all the snow cleared away?
I hope, well, are you guys gonna have it, when we can get in there, we can get in there, but. So we don't.
It's kind of for, for those that are gonna be out storm spotting, so anybody that you know that helps us with that, probably ought to come to it. Then March thirtieth, we're gonna have the advanced class webinar again, and it starts at six thirty.
Okay.
Can I ask a question? How does, how does the town of Hennessy separate themselves from like this car show as far as liability? Like if a car was done to burn out and goes off into the traffic, or into the crowd?
How do we separate, separate ourselves from liability?
Yeah.
That's a good question. Do you have a, an answer for that? I, I don't.
We can probably just put a sign out there that states that, you know, entering such area puts.
The sign doesn't work anymore for the law.
No. I mean, the town of Hennessy can be sued for anything, I mean.
Yeah, but just speaking from experience on your racetrack, you have to have, you have to have a contestant, whoever's doing the burnout, to actually sign a waiver stating that they would, they were liable, liability. If you just have a sign, anybody can plead ignorance, but, and I understand, no matter what's gonna happen, town of Hennessy is gonna get sued, you know, just like anytime we had an accident on the racetrack, they sued the, everybody on the board, sued the gov, uh, the county commissioners and all that, so, uh, you know, so I just wonder how you guys separate, cause we, we've had car shows.
Usually the people putting it on have some type of liability insurance.
Yeah, that's what we do.
Event insurance.
Tennessee United, we, for our wine and chocolate festival.
So I don't know if the cruisers have.
Good question, I don't.
All vehicles will have insurance.
I don't think we can totally separate, like you said, if, if somebody wants to sue, they're gonna sue everybody they think they might get a penny out of.
I, I mean, I think it's a good deal, you know, you, for anything, for any people, but you also gotta be, you know, smart about what the people, the other thing too is on the burnouts, where's the burnout at?
There's a burnout pad that they use, even for the September car show.
Here's a, a map right here.
Just west of Princeville.
They pour concrete.
Over here is the drain tracks, there's actually a concrete pad, uh, that's separated out from the asphalt. They actually do burnouts on, and that's what we're proposing, to close this street and this street. So that way, in case a car does decide to go haywire, you know, they, they're basically going towards nothing. No one ever stands in front of a vehicle that's doing a burnout, ever.
Cause like down there, down there like Union City, they were having burnouts on the highway.
Right, that was for a TV show.
And, yeah, and, anyway, anyway, the park room transportation came back in and said, hey, we ain't fixing this concrete, we gotta get the burnouts, it's on, on the city of, uh, Union City, so, that's why I was asking.
There's a pad of it, that's specifically cord, just cord, it's on the asphalt.
Yeah, and it's a low traffic area as well, there's not a lot of.
But I would think, I, you might check with Mike.
Mm-hmm, I'm gonna talk with Mike over there.
Cause I think he might have a form that he has people sign for that.
Yeah, I was gonna get with Mike and kind of see how he, he plans all of it, and how he actually deals with how many people come in or which direction they come in, since he has, uh, experience doing it.
Yeah.
So I, I was wanting to pull up all the resources I can possibly get with things that have been done in town, and that way we can kind of at least keep things moving, you know, fluidly, so.
Okay, any other citizens comments? Counsel person reports, anything deep? Cliff?
No, sir, except for glad to have you back.
Thank you, thank you very much. I have nothing, Richard? Okay.
I make a motion to adjourn.
Second that, roll call.
Cliff?
Yes.
Bert?
Yes.
Yes.
Richard?
Yes.
Okay, this will be a meeting of the Hennessy Board of Trustees for the Hennessy Utility Authority, roll call please.
Keith?
Here.
Cliff?
Here.
Bert?
Here.
Wes? Richard?
Yes.
All right, consider approval of consent agenda, minutes of the meeting. Uh, approval of claims as follows, January purchase orders, fifteen thousand, five ninety-nine forty-four. February purchase orders, ninety thousand, seven thirty-seven fifty. February meter deposit refunds, three hundred and eighty dollars. Transfer three hundred and sixty from pooled check, checking account fourteen thirty-six eighty-six to meter deposit C D. Thanks for coming, Tammy.
Thank you, sir.
Thirty-five oh two eight, and the treasurer's report. Anybody got any additions to the modifications to any of that?
I move we approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Roll call.
Keith?
Yes.
Cliff?
Yes.
Bert?
Yes.
Richard?
Yes.
Citizens comments? Other scheduled business, discuss, approve, deny, reject, and or take action on the following, I am a this discussion with possible action to award bid and serve project on north side of Highway fifty-one. I think that's in your packet. The engineering company has said that ore construction.
Yes.
Which I'm glad to see because they're local.
Yeah, I like those guys.
Eighty thou, eighty-one thousand, seven hundred and fifteen dollars.
I've, uh, I've worked with those guys, um, they didn't work for my company, but I had to work with them, doing a lot of pipeline crossings, uh, whenever the pipelines are hard and heavy. Great, uh, the guys that own the company, great guys, and, uh, they do, they do good work.
I'm, I'm happy we can give them some business.
Absolutely.
We have, um, three hundred and thirteen thousand, three hundred and twenty-three dollars and eighty-six cents available for that project, so we have plenty of money.
Okay.
They're well under what we have.
And you can look on the back of that sheet, the next best bid was a hundred and eight thousand, eight sixty-two twenty-eight, so he's, he's well under that, forty thousand dollars or something under that.
Is that money coming out of the loan?
Um, yes, we had, um, loan monies left over from the sewer project at the lift station. And then, um, we also had, um, another sewer loan project from before also, so those two monies together.
Okay, I'm just curious.
Good.
So we'll be able to do more sewer work too.
Great.
Yes.
I make a motion to second bid from ore construction ink of eighty-one thousand, seven hundred and fifteen dollars.
I'll second that.
Roll call.
Cliff?
Yes.
Keith?
Yes.
Bert?
Yes.
Richard?
Yes.
Item B's discussion with possible action to accept the twenty nineteen, twenty twenty audit. I think we've already approved that on the regular agenda, so this is just kind of a housekeeping item.
Okay.
I move that we accept the twenty nineteen, twenty twenty audit.
And I will second that.
Roll call.
Keith?
Yes.
Cliff?
Yes.
Bert?
Yes.
Richard?
Yes.
Item C's, accept or reject any resignations not received, I know of none, new business?
I have new business.
Okay.
Nobody leaves till I know I get my pickup started.
Okay. We can do that.
Richard, did you have to get new tires?
You gotta, you gotta tell a story here. I about took out the town hall sign. I pulled up to the intersection and I eased, had to stop there's traffic. So I slowly eased my pickup forward and the brand tailfished on me.
Boom.
And I was about this close to the town hall sign, I said, how am I gonna get out of this? So I decided Tiffany to grind my way out of it.
You did, I was coming out there to help push you. I didn't even know it was you until you called us.
Oh, man. I didn't die COVID, but I about died of a heart. And on the next agenda, I want a, new item for the next agenda, there's no curb there. And that's why I slid so close to the sign. So it need to raise that curb up, it's missing, that concrete is missing.
Well, also there's, you know where the asphalt is, and then where the curb is, there's like this little square, like drop off, and this tire was down in that little drop off.
Oh, no.
And so when he left, there was all kinds of rubber in there.
It's full now.
You know, I go out one time the whole week. I thought Ed was gonna come get me. Lock me up. Vandalism.
You gave me a laugh.
I could laugh there, but it wasn't funny then.
Okay, well, was that council person reports, I think it was.
Uh, I was gonna mention that, uh, last Thursday, we had an early morning meeting about the drainage over on Walnut, and Tiffany asked us to drive down the street there at Walnut, how narrow it is. I've been down it before, but that was more narrow than I anticipated it being. So that is really something that we really need to look at, making it a one-way street or something.
Ugh.
Try down it.
We need to do something.
I know. Well, like, why didn't it, there by the event center, are you talking going north?
Yes, going.
South.
South, oh.
Going south by, yeah, trying to go.
Drainage?
Yeah, they really cut a lot of the, the road, well, I meant the, the road's still there, but there's no shoulder.
I think when they vanish that drainage on the east side of the road, I don't think it'll look as narrow as what it does.
You don't think so?
I don't know, right now it's, it's very narrow.
I'm sorry, I thought you meant going north.
No, going south, that one block there.
You have deep ditches on both sides, the road is narrow, but you have deep ditches on both sides, and so people are scared to get too close to it.
You can't get too far, so.
Yeah, very icy condition, be very easy to go off.
I couldn't even get in, I'm one lane.
Wow.
Well, Tiffany asked me to go down it, so I did go down it.
I did too.
So, and it was icy.
Maybe we need to take a look at that, put that on the agenda.
But if there's nothing else, I make a motion to adjourn.
Second. Roll call.
Yes.
Bert?
Yes.
Keith?
Yes.
Richard?
Yes.